Okay. Whenever you're ready, Howard.
I'm ready. Mark, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. All right, so with the time being six thirty eight, I'm gonna call the Plan Commission meeting to order. A public notice of the Planning Commission.
We lost your mark.
No, just ready. Sorry, I think I got disconnected.
Yeah, we got.
This is Mark Potasko. All right, so with the time being six thirty eight P M., I'll call the Plan Commission meeting to order. Public notice was given that the meeting is being held remotely via Zoom due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Let's start first order businesses roll call.
Jason Berry's here.
Eric Polk has been here.
AJ Ware here.
David Brown here.
Mark Potasko here. We have a quorum. Next order business is public comment. Howard, do we have anybody that submitted any public comment or anybody that's on the phone that would like to provide public comment?
No, no. Tony Ebling is on. Tony, you need to unmute yourself.
Star six, Tony.
Star six. There she is.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, great. Tony Ebling's here. So we do have a quorum. Next order business is old business for review and approve the planned minutes for the meeting held on October first two twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion from Polkaster.
Second by Chair, sorry, Commissioner Barry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And next order business is new business. Mr. Howard Capari will present his twenty twenty planning annual report, his twenty twenty long range agenda, and his twenty twenty one planning meeting schedule for next year. Howard, would you like to take over?
Yes, so I hope everyone can hear me well. So the first one is the annual plan report, cases that were heard for twenty twenty. We only had four cases. The first one was in January sixth twenty twenty was the adult use cannabis text amendment, which seems like a very long time ago before COVID came into effect. And then on April second twenty twenty, we had Charles Comerford, which was a special use for Lopez Tire Shop, which was approved by planning and zoning. Then August sixth, we had twenty twenty, we had Taylor Ali Zayed, the special use for tires R Us on Western Avenue, which was also approved by planning and zoning with conditions. And then the final one that we had here was a special meeting August twenty sixth twenty twenty for Affilia Smith Evans, which was a text amendment and a special use for Affilius Banquet. That was approved by planning and it was approved by zoning in the November fifth meeting. Not so long ago. So those were the four cases. There were more cases heard in the zoning Board of Appeals because we had an appeal to the building official. And we also had variances for parking, so zoning had more cases or cases that were heard versus planning. Planning was pretty simple, so it was what? Three special uses, one text amendment, well, three special uses and two text amendment. So that's the report for for planning for twenty twenty. So I'm gonna jump into the second item, which I guess is gonna interest more people, is the long range. The longer range agenda for twenty twenty one. Before I go into this, I just wanted to notify everyone. I'm no longer associated with the building department. I was relieved of that responsibility during the summertime, so this gives me more time now. This gives me more time now to focus on planning and zoning, especially on the rewrite of the zoning code and looking at the comprehensive plan hopefully in twenty twenty two. So what I did here was I I created a very short one page report that just goes into, you know, what I just said. I have more time now to focus on planning and zoning and the day to day activities, which entails planning and zoning, special uses, text amendment variances. And then what I suggested was to I'm gonna be hitting these topics. There are twelve. Reality is eleven, but I listed all twelve topics or headings for the zoning code. So the first one is rules and definition. I personally think the definition definition section needs a major overhaul. We have lots of uses that are not even listed in our definition. And this is important because without a zoning definition, then it's always very debatable between me, the applicant, or the applicant's attorney. So that's one one area I'm gonna really focus on. I already started beefing up on the definition. Currently, we only have like twenty pages of definitions. I'm looking at already at fifty. Try to be more verbose when it comes to definitions, like definition of truck terminal, truck parking, banquet hall, stuff like that. The second one's the schedule use control. I'm interested in putting it in a in a table format, which is gonna be easier for people to look at the uses under the zones and to also include the U T O D as part of this table. So now everybody will be looking everything at the same time versus, oh, no, that's the U T O D. You need to look at that section of the code separately. And then the general provisions, there are gonna be changes, not that much. Bulk regulations, there might be some tweaking. Those are your setbacks, your heights, your lot coverage. I might look at tweaking the lot coverage definition. Currently, lot coverage in Blue Island is any building or structure that inhabits the land. I was also looking at, you know, down the road, lot coverage that also incorporates maybe driveways or walkways or other structures. So we could start looking at permeability in a better manner for reducing stormwater hopefully down the road. So that's gonna be some of the revisions with the bulk regulations. Number five, off street parking and loading facilities, that's gonna be updated because some zones we have parking that's allowed and some we don't. I'm looking at more comprehensive analysis of planning. Have like shared parking and also start to incorporate valet parking already in two applications that we already heard earlier this year. The Mexican restaurant on Vermont, which was a parking variance, they they would propose to use valet parking. And then with Affilia, which was heard also at the Z B A, parking variance for shared parking, they're also proposing to use valet, so that's one of the things I like to tie in with the zoning code. Number six, home occupation. It's okay at this point, but I like to add new features to it, like online sales or retail, and look at maybe major versus minor home occupation. So if it's a minor, I could sign off on it as a business license application. If it's a major home occupation, then it would have to go through planning or zoning. Some communities have that. I think it's not a bad way to provide more input from people in the community versus me making a decision. Plan developments, that's another area that I'm thinking about tweaking further. Put some more standards that should be at least adhered to when someone is applying for it. Yard regulations. We have yard regulations for different objects, for example, windows. Windows that passes the the building line or roofs or cornices on roofs and stuff like that, you're allowed some, how you call it, allowance to incur into the setbacks. I might do some tweakings here. The one that I'm not gonna touch at all is number nine signage, because signage was revised maybe three or four years ago, where I'm already incorporating the changes, reviewing signage, and you start to see it more throughout the cities with awning signs, with wall signs and illumination, the signs. Number ten, nonconforming building structures and uses. This is an area I'm also gonna work on during the year. I think the current standard is very cumbersome and very confusing. I think you could say a lot more with less words than with more words here, like other municipalities have. And then number ten is eleven, and number eleven, performance standards applicable to all districts. That's your your standard requirements for noise, for lights. Those types of regulation, that's pretty fine. And then administration and enforcement, maybe some more tweaking. Currently, the zoning code says that the building commissioner is the person who's responsible for generating a zoning certification or zoning interpretation. That should fall more under the zoning administrator, which I inhabit that position when I'm asked to do a zoning letter, and I've taken that responsibility more according to section twelve, that falls under the building commissioner, so there needs to be some tweaking here. So basically, eleven out of twelve titles or headings will be worked on. The major ones is gonna be the definitions, uses or use controls, parking, and some plan development. So so my idea is to present four reports in a quarterly manner. So I kind of mimic the the days of the meetings that we have available. So the first quarterly meeting will be held on March fourth twenty twenty one, the second, June third twenty twenty one, the third, September second twenty twenty one, and then the the third or the fourth one, the last one in the year, December second twenty twenty one. And these reports will incorporate my progress and will give the planning and the zoning Board of Appeals materials to review, which we could then talk about it in a future meeting, a meeting after the quarterly review, see how the group feels about my progress here and stuff like that. My idea is to spend the first quarter working on use controls and definitions because we need to have a robust definitions to move forward because we're always being challenged. I'm being challenged on behalf of the city on definitions that are not existent in the zoning code or uses have changed, which should be reflected in today's definition section. And then, you know, nonconformities, because we have a lot of these older coach houses. I'm still waiting from what how the state wants to handle coach houses or granny flats. There is, there is a resolution or an amendment that that's trying to be passed that would allow for some flexibility to have a secondary secondary accessory dwelling unit on a single family lot. So I'm gonna mimic the nonconformity with what the state will hopefully pass, if they do pass something. So this marks, next year will mark the fiftieth anniversary of the ordinance number twenty one fifty one, which was done in nineteen seventy one, or it was inaugurated or approved in nineteen seventy one. So my idea is to do most of this zoning code by twenty twenty one. So in twenty twenty two, hopefully in the beginning, January, February, March, April, we'll have like a public process, right? We'll go through the different committees, maybe have public forums where the public can be invited to participate and see what needs to be tweaked, if any tweaking needs to be done, and keep the application or keep the zoning code moving forward with changes. So my idea is to start small, Howard, working on it, passing it to planning and zoning in twenty twenty one in the four quarterly reports, and then opening up to the other committees or commissions that we have here and to the general public. Then eventually this will go to the zoning code, right? City Council, but it'll go through a formal, you know, new text, text amendment with a zoning code formally, once we have the public input and stuff like that. So that's my long range plan for twenty twenty one. Does anyone have any questions, suggestions, concerns?
Nope.
Okay. I'll probably have more questions at the zoning board.
Yeah, I would add that that nonconforming section is gonna be tricky, you know, and that was always a challenge.
Yeah.
And especially, as you mentioned, Howard, the interpretation of that. I could remember a few battles where I thought it read one way and somebody else thought it read another way. So in in a community like Blue Island, you know, where you're trying to apply twenty first century zoning to a nineteenth century community, it 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 I think it's important that we get that that section right, you know, so that yeah, you lose that ambiguity.
Yeah, and and what I forgot to also mention, during the zoning process, I'm gonna be working with the city attorney. There's a new attorney next year because of the elections with the new attorney, the new team that's on. Yeah, nonconformity is a tricky one because if it's a preexisting nonconforming use, it was built before zoning. We have that time period of six month or expansion of a use that's not allowed. Or if it gets destroyed by acts of God and you're rebuilding it more than fifty percent of the house value, then it should conform to today's code. And I I think that's a delicate issue that needs to be further looked upon. The way I interpret the code is if someone, you know, let's say, you know, a funeral home received a special use in nineteen fifty five. If that funeral home sits unsold between one owner to a new owner for two or three years, that person does not lose the nonconformity because it went through a special use. Now, if the funeral home was done before the zoning code or before any codes were implemented and it sat vacant for several years, then the nonconformity aspect would would be lost. So I think the code does mention it very well about that, you know, it is something that was approved per the municipality. The only caveat, the only change would be auto repair, because then we have another ordinance that says every time there's a change of owner, a change of lease, a change of of or change of the business name or anything, they would have to go back to the planning zoning for special use for auto repair, auto detailing and what have you, especially the ones on Western Avenue.
Howard?
Yeah.
Did you say that that we're expecting new attorneys after the election?
Well, there is always that possibility with a new mayor, new administration.
Okay.
There's always that possibility. Just being open, just looking at the big picture. I'm fine with working with Olson and Stirk, but there might be changes. I'm not sure. You know, just being cognizant, you know, we might go from one law firm to another possibly. And there might be also changes in the administration itself, the way things are gonna be processed or heard.
Howard, so if I'm understanding this, so if if a building sits vacant for two months, three months between lease occupant, they would then have to re submit everything through the planning board?
Technically, it's six months if it sits vacant. But then there's always, you know, that period where, you know, if depends when the person moved out or when the person declared it it being vacant, then that date would hold for six months. So after six months, half a year, it loses that nonconformity. So in most of these cases where it's a nonconforming question, it's been places where it's been more of a year or two. There has been instances where, you know, I have like a multifamily in a single family zone, and they had people there. They provided me with copies of leases and rent payments. So then they were allowed to continue with the nonconforming use because, you know, the apartment was being rented on a continuous basis. So there's been examples where I've allowed for nonconformities to continue. They prove and provide proof, which then it's documented and put in the paper file folder and online and the digital system that we have at City Hall, proofs that, you know, you could continue with the nonconformity. So a good example is the funeral home on Vermont. I had a person over the summer thinking about purchasing and reestablish the funeral home use. I did a lot of research on that. I looked at the planning and zoning files and stuff like that. That that single family house was converted back in the twenties before zoning came into effect. So that had no legal grounds for it to be continued as a as a funeral home, and it would meet the criteria of nonconformities. Now, if a person, let's say, purchased that property on Vermont across from the school and decides to apply for a special use, which is allowed in a R one zone, then that goes in perpetuity, right? You can have different owners, but the use stays with the property. That property can be a funeral home forever. So in situations like that, I'm very cognizant. I always look at the records before I make a zoning interpretation. So not everything that looks preexisting, nonconforming is correct. There are permutations. There are questions that needs to be further addressed.
Obviously, too, parking has been a bugaboo for a while. You know, the old C one didn't require parking in the downtown. You know, this may be an unpopular opinion, but I think parking is not required in U T O D myself. And I never really liked the way the zoning code used parking, where like you could take the parking from the previous use and then look at the new use and come up with like, okay, maybe they need to add two parking spaces or something like that. It just seemed really clumsy.
Yeah, parking is a tough one. I'm usually cognizant of this too and the U T O D. So if it's going from retail to retail, no variances are required. If the intensity becomes more intense, and there is a stipulation in the U T O D that says more than twenty percent of internal renovation or rehabilitation triggers the regular parking requirements. So for example, Affilius Banquet was a good example where that got triggered. When I rendered my zoning decision two years ago, I was very careful with that. I also asked for a second opinion with Leslie Kennedy, and she also interpreted that section of the U T O D correctly like I did. So basically, in Affilius situation, that was a retail, former retail spot that is becoming a banquet hall, so you have more intensification for parking. This becomes more of an issue with the zoning Board of Appeals, and that's gonna be addressed further at the Z B A, I know for for sure, because parking, because we deal with parking variances, we deal with, you know, agreements from lot A to lot B, owner one, owner two, and with valet parking. Yeah, I'm looking at the U T O D, you know, shared parking flexibility.
Yeah, I guess my my only, my main thought is just to make it more transparent, make it more obvious for the business owner. You know, we we hate to be in a situation where somebody comes in and wants to open a business in town and then gets stuck on parking, you know, when when they don't expect it, so the way it's, the way it works right now, it's I think it's hard for a layperson or business owner to to kind of understand it. You know, they might look out their window and say, well, there's tons of parking here. So I I, yeah, I don't have a solution. I just, I'm just saying it would be nice if it was more obvious how parking requirements impact businesses.
Or my my thing is looking at each of the public parking lots in the U T O D area and use it as a parking bank where, you know, it's it's a number that's in flux. So the users that come in will incorporate a portion of that parking, even though it's open to the public, but for zoning purposes, use that as a bank. What other municipalities have used is parking, on street parking in front of the business. So if your business is fifty feet in length storefront area, then you could count two parking spaces as part of your parking. If you have a corner property where you have fifty feet and a hundred, then you could incorporate all the parking. The parking is allowed on the street. Depends, not all streets have on street parking. That would be another alternative to work on. But in my experience for the last two years in the U T O D, most of the businesses they came in, except for Affilia, most of it I was able to hand it in turn, handle it internally. You know, the the new cafe that's opening up on Grove Street, that triggers very little parking, so for me, that's not an issue because parking is regulated for restaurants or bakeries for the number of seats. So if a person has like two seats, it's really half a parking space. So that one, I really don't have a problem. Retail to retail, it's a wash, you know, it's existing, preexisting, no, no parking, no parking continues. C one, that's a tough one because C one says, you know, parking is not required. So if a person wants to open up a restaurant, they might go through the special use process, but parking is not a variance. And then your regular C two or commercial district that's already built towards the automobile, that's easier to deal with, because at least there's some parking. And then this whole, you know, conversation, you know, I got parking behind my building. How does the municipality feel about cars traversing on a on a rear alleyway? You know, should the new person who's opening up a business contribute money towards a fund to rehabilitate alleyways that are heavily traversed? You know, that's another thing that I'm thinking about incorporating in the zoning code. Because we do have several businesses that do have vacant space behind their their lots that could provide for on off street parking, but they would have to traverse through an alleyway. Anything else on this part?
Howard, I I know something else that you're focused on and and glad you have been, is the the landscape code, the screening and stuff like that.
Yes.
That's just staying intact. Again, it's it's fairly new, so I don't know if it needs to be addressed, but has it been working for you?
Um, we'll see. I'm gonna put it to a test with the former Metro South Hospital. We'll see, I'm going to put it to a test with the former Metro South Hospital. That's going to be one area that I'm going to look at possibly implementing it. Not a hundred percent, but to have some modification if they're going to be rebuilding or redoing the parking or eliminating parking or adding more green space. Usually with landscaping, I work with Eric Alvarez, the city contract engineer. So yeah, it's a tough one because technically under the code, if it's more than five parking spaces that are being disturbed, then the parking landscaping gets triggered. Less than five, you know, oh, I'm just restriping or I'm just doing this, then becomes a questionable thing. The landscaping is going to be vital for new development naturally, of course. And for existing lots that, you know, there's a site plan review because they're doing stuff outside of the building, then I would trigger the parking and not the parking, the landscaping. Kind of like with tires R us, you know, just to dress up the building a little bit. It's kind of hard when a person leases the property versus owning the property. I can understand the cost for, you know, doing improvements for something that's not yours, but whenever I have an opportunity, I do try to incorporate the landscaping. So for example, the, and I already mentioned it twice with people talking to me about that funeral home that's closed on Vermont Street. That's a good example where I like to see landscaping being done. And I'm willing to work with the applicant, you know, it doesn't have to be done right now, we could have like a two-year plan. As I understand the cost factor, I'm looking at small improvements that lead to bigger solutions. Anything else?
I I know code enforcement too was important for you and you know, is is that being handled by the building department? I mean, it should be, but just with like with with the change, you know, what you're saying, you you've been able to step away from the building department thankfully. And that that's a good thing, but just that coordination.
It depends, I'm still enforcing anything sign related. I've been a little bit lax because of the COVID pandemic. I've seen banners go up, you know, we're open, you know, please come in. I haven't enforced anything like that. I'm respectable of the businesses trying to, you know, make a profit in these trying times. I had a system, I had like three phases, phase one, two and three on signage, which I accomplished two phases out of three, the year and a half that I was here working, when I was part of the building and zoning department. You know, the first one was the obvious ones, right? Feather flags, banners that were used as permanent signs, most of that have been removed. Then the second one was window signage. Was able to work with a lot of the businesses, especially on Western Avenue in the U T O D to reduce the cluttering of the windows. And then the third phase, which I was working on before the pandemic began, was to remove a lot of existing nonconforming signs that were allowed many years ago, that is no longer in an existing business, which we would call ghost signs, tried to have them removed. Whenever an application comes through my desk for a new business license application, any signage that's nonexisting or nonconforming, like the pole sign through the Dollar Tree on Western and one hundred and twenty-seventh, I was I was able to have that removed and have a new monument sign being placed. Tires R Us is another example where I've said, you're not allowed to have a roof sign anymore, but you're allowed to have a monument sign, you can have a wall sign. Also with the perspective daycare that might come with Alicia Battle. That's another one that she has a roof sign, I already mentioned, we don't allow for those types of sign. So a lot of it, a lot of this enforcement is being done through the business license application, working with the businesses and working with community development committee, because sometimes I still provide feedback to them on the business development grant program for signage and awning. So it's not really, you know, phase three is not really enforcing me going out, you know, issuing summonses, I don't do summonses. I like to work with the business owner or business owner and give them time to remove it. I don't like going to adjudication court, I think it's a waste of time and money. And most people have complied with the signage requirements that I have asked for. You know, I try to enforce it evenly, you know, throughout the whole district or neighborhood. Everybody's feather flags have to come down and stuff like that, and I really haven't had much pushback, maybe one or two businesses were upset with me, but that's beside the point. When it comes to the other types of enforcement, like commercial vehicles and parked in a residential area, it depends, sometimes it might be a police issue, sometimes it's a zoning issue. Cars parked on a driveway blocking a sidewalk, again, it could be a zoning or building. I work with the building official, Ahmed Saint Dino, in situations like this, so we try to work together. But I've been, I've been out there doing enforcement too, so it's not like I'm always here. You know, behind the computer monitor at the office or at home now because of the COVID pandemic.
Yeah, I think there's a provision in U T O D that is probably unenforceable about like a sort of amortization period for nonconforming signs. That was like, what, five years or so, and that was passed a while ago. I'm guessing that has to go, I mean, that would be, that's really hard to to go to a business and and tell them your sign doesn't conform, you have to take it down, you know, I mean, I guess there is you know, if there's a business district grant that would give them a new sign that does conform, that's great, but I I I personally wouldn't want to put, I wouldn't want to be in that position to go to a business and say, take down your sign, and I wouldn't want to put any any staff in that position either, you know, that might be something that
Right, but for example. Yeah, but for example, there are some signs that the business no longer exists. And, you know, the the new owner or business owner or existing property owner, they can, they should remove it. You know, you know, reduce sign clutter. I'm not doing it all at once, I'm doing little by little in a focused area. You've seen a lot of temporary banners come down on Western Avenue, especially between one twenty-seventh and one nineteen. You know, banners on the side of a building, which we don't allow for, if it's not a corner lot, any type of wall sign. Several bars have have cooperated, the liquor store has cooperated. The two medical clinics have removed their temporary banners that was used as a permanent sign. So those are examples where, you know, it's it has worked, you know, it just takes time and patience. And working with them, speaking with their company representative, especially with the medical clinics on stuff like this. But in the current manner, I'm being more flexible because of the pandemic, so I'm not really enforcing that, but you you don't see signs anymore, you know, advertising anything, you know, feather flags or signs, you know, attached to a gas station pump, like Fortins or stuff like that, and LED, you know, little by little trying to remove LEDs from windows, outlining buildings and stuff like that, that's a tough one.
Are they against the code? Are LEDs against the code?
They are.
They are.
Come down to Old Western.
We're solely metro, it's pandemic.
LEDs are technically not allowed if it's if it's used for accents to windows, doors or building exterior. If it's an LED that's part of a sign inside that has a face on it, then no, but if it's the LED ribbon that you see in a lot of places throughout the city, throughout everywhere, usually those are not allowed. The only one that continues to violate that is the barber shop on Western and one hundred and twenty-seventh. He only keeps the LED lights on the windows on the first floor and not on the second or third. It's a tough one because, you know, I I've received pushback on that, so. I'm working with community development, I'm trying to strengthen that.
Understandably, Howard, and that's, you know, obviously with the with the with the new barber shop down on Old Western, which is a whole thing in itself, again, that's another one where all the rope lighting went up. You know, there doesn't, understandably, it's a pandemic, but it seemed like that that whole business sort of went up overnight without any sort of approval. So I mean, obviously, you know, you know, the businesses that are using vinyl signage. Yeah, LEDs, vinyl signage, so forth and so on, and, you know, understandable, these are, these are times no one ever expected we would see, but I mean, that's that's a, that's an example, at least for for myself, that, I mean, it's kind of overnight, like, what the, what happened here and who signed off on this? And I know Randy is, Randy's kind of been involved with this as well, is that it's kind of under the name of a preexisting business, so, I mean.
Yeah, I I understand. It it's a delicate manner, but, you know, for example, the Shell gas station on Kedzie and one hundred and twenty-seventh, when it was that chicken place, now it's a Fuego tacos. You know, they had a lot of signs plastered throughout the building. So when it changed from one business owner to another, I was able to reduce a lot of the signs that were attached on the building, on the facade towards the top. He also had a ribbon of LED lights all around the edge of the building, which that has been turned off and removed. So like the barber shop is just enforcement either by near building. I'll I'll look into that matter more. So before we run out of time, I just wanted to go over the meetings list, meeting list for next year. So it's always good practice, especially, you know, under planning and zoning, to create a a schedule for the public to be aware. Twenty twenty's schedule is on the website for planning and zoning. What I like to do is I like to do three things in one schedule. I like to have an application date when an applicant's supposed to submit things to me, so it gives me at least a week to review materials before it goes for legal publishing, which is the no more than thirty days, no, no less than fifteen days before a scheduled meeting. And then, of course, the meeting date, right, the the date that we have the meeting. So everything pretty much worked out for the first Thursday of the month, except for April. April first, it turns to be, it turns out to be Holy Thursday. So I was, I'll substitute that Thursday for the second Thursday of of that month, which is April eighth. That's the only quirk in that one. And, you know, I I still have the meeting dates at the physical building, at the physical place. I've also incorporated the COVID materials at the very bottom, so anyone can participate online or by telephone. We're still meeting at six thirty, I know I reached out to many people. It it came down to the mayor feeling comfortable, wanting it to have six thirty and seven thirty, not six to seven. So we're going to continue meeting next year on the first Thursday of the month at six thirty. So I just wanted to provide a a copy for discussion or for suggestions. This is the way I've I've done it for many places where I work. Because, you know, developer or business owner might not be aware, you know, I have the different dates I have to hit internally, the application date, the legal publication date, and then the meeting date. So I I think it's pretty good, I don't think there's any problems or errors, I don't. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the planning commission schedule document?
None here. I did, I did want to ask though, so Ron is on the Z B A now, is that right?
Yes. Z B A has lost a lot of people due to retirements. So we lost three people in a period of two weeks, so hence the reason why August twenty-sixth, you guys, your your commission heard Affiliates Banquet, but we couldn't hear it until November of this month or last month. Because we missed two meetings because we we couldn't have a quorum, so Ron volunteered to help the zoning board, you know, fill in the interim, at least for one appointment period to help the zoning board, because we've lost a lot of people and it's very hard to advertise for new people. So currently, the planning only has six people, zoning only has five. So if we have one person or two people, we don't have a quorum. So currently, you know, planning has more people, they have six people, zoning only has five. We're looking for new people to join the planning and zoning, we're trying to fill them out with the mayor's office. It just takes time, so Ron was good enough to help with the zoning.
That's good, yeah, no, I just wanted to know if there's plans to try to appoint more to to both boards. And I know it's a tricky time now with an election looming and whatnot, but.
Yeah, and I was also proposing, and these are some of the the things I'm talking about in the zoning code, maybe have a combined planning and zoning board or entity. Where it depends on what type of case, different people will participate, have like a pool of people. Many municipalities that are smaller have this combination. I have to look at it in further details with these communities to see how it works and if it works. But I've seen examples where they have one entity that does both, planning and zoning.
Yeah, I would, I would support, I don't know if I always did, but I'd support a planning, a combined planning and zoning commission. Just because of the challenges to, you know, get people to commit to, you know, being a part of it. It's not an easy job, but it wouldn't seem to be easier if you could have one board, and also easier in terms of process, you know, if you don't have to. I'll I'll say sometimes planned commission can seem a little bit lame duck because we're making recommendations to a board that's making recommendations to a committee that's then going to, you know, counsel. So I think it would give you know, a a little bit more oomph to what we're looking at. You know, if it was one stop, I I would definitely be supportive of that.
Yeah, Howard, if I if I could, yeah, I I I agree with that as well, coming from a business perspective, you know, as as prospective business owners would consider us, if it's one less hoop to jump through. You know, it's it's difficult enough, and if it's one less, if it's one less meeting to answer the same questions you've already answered, I mean, I think it would just help streamline the process and yeah, I mean, I'm I'm all for that, I I I'm sure it's easier said than done, as most things are. But this is a way that it's to try to attract more businesses, it's one-stop shop, what are the questions for the business owners, what can we provide? Versus, well, you'll have to come back next month with a whole new set of questions. You know, if if another municipality is is willing to be more streamlined in their process, I think I think it would help us in the long run in being more competitive and trying to attract new business.
Right, and and that's the reason why I like to have planning zoning on the same night. So at least the applicant shows up physically or through Zoom on one night. It's a two-hour process, one hour for the first group, the other hour with the second group. But at least it's being done versus when I inherited this position, when I started, zoning was meeting on Thursday and then, no, planning was meeting on the first Thursday and then zoning was meeting on the second Monday. And then it just became a communication problem for advertising. So then I would have to spend more more time and money advertising in the newspaper. You know, planning meets on this night and then zoning meets on the other. And then it's also confusing for anybody who wants to participate, right, part of the public. You know, do I go to the planning or do I go to the zoning and both hears it? So I'm trying to be cognizant, at least put both groups together on the same night. So before we finish, I like to add one more item to to at least inform the group here. So in trying to better our our system of communicating with the public, we, the city, has invited Carrie Horvath to make a presentation on January seventh, which would be our first meeting of the year, planning and zoning, to go over rules and procedure and how a hearing should be conducted and stuff like this. Again, in most communities where I've worked, it's always been practiced to have legal discuss with the groups. At the beginning of the year to go over any new regulation or amendments. And especially with COVID, to go over the stuff that we should be doing correctly uh, online or not. Uh, as an example, you know, I'm not saying we're not doing anything correctly. It's just an example here. Uh, so um, I'm thinking about having a combined planning and zoning. In other words, we all appear at six-thirty and uh, Carrie will present to both groups from six-thirty, I guess, to seven-thirty or eight o'clock. It depends. So I just wanted to inform everyone uh, before the year is over that we're working on that. Uh, I don't have any materials from uh, Carrie on that, but uh, he's going to do a presentation. So that's a, that's a positive. And I think that's good because it gets us talking about, you know, questions about, you know, you know, are we following the procedure correctly? Are we allowing people ample time to discuss things and stuff like that? Once we do go back to meeting in person, hopefully in the near future.
Sounds good.
Uh, yeah, it sounds good, Howard. Thank you.
No, you're very welcome.
Any other uh, issues or commissioner concerns? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
There was a motion made by um, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Somebody's dog made the most shit.
I think it was David Brown.
I think it was Ken Brown.
Uh, second by Chair Patazka. All in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
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 Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Randy for everything. Have a good night, everybody.